Welcome to the February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Board, uh, meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. We welcome your attendance. Thank you for being here tonight and taking your time to come. Uh, we appreciate Surrey County citizens' interest in, uh, in the county, uh, doing their business and, uh, thank you for being here. Uh, I'll call the meeting to order and, uh, ask Vice Chairman Van Tucker to lead our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand. Thank you.
I pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you year again to do the county's business. For all of your mercies and goodness and kindness you bestowed upon each and every one of us, the blessings of this life, this week, this day. We ask that you bless those around us that might not be quite so fortunate. We see wars and rumors of wars and hardships and just hurt and pain all over the world. And we ask that you continue to bless those situations, Lord, and and help us to, uh, do our part to help alleviate those situations as well. Now go with us tonight and help all we do be in your will, in your service, in your honor, in your glory. And I ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, gentlemen, you have your agenda, uh, for tonight's meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion Commissioner Marion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a second? A second Commissioner Johnson, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. Also, you have the, uh, meeting minutes from February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. What is your pleasure? Motion to approve tonight's, um, the meeting minutes, uh, for February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Commissioner Goins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Tucker, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the February sixth meeting minutes are approved. Okay, we have, uh, consent agenda. I'll ask the county manager, if you would, go down that list, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department end of month summaries, charges and reports. Next item is the Running the Vines five K and ten K ordinance. Next is the Substance Abuse Recovery Grant applications for your approval. Next item is also from Substance Abuse Recovery, additional media contracts to go along with what you approved at the last meeting. Next is the final Substance Abuse Recovery request for a Partner's Grant Budget modification. That's the half million dollar grant we've been utilizing this fiscal year. Next are position reclassifications for the Health and Nutrition Center. Next, Parks and Recreation Fee Waivers. Next item is Detention Center Project Change Orders. And finally, Westfield Community Center to refund the January rent to the previous tenant. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, you have the consent agenda there. It, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as described, mostly housekeeping items, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner Tucker to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Marion, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the consent is approved. At this time, we have our special recognition for our senior games. Uh, great pleasure to recognize, uh, all of our participants, uh, for senior games. Um, Yakon Valley Senior Games, uh, State Finals, two thousand and twenty-two. You would come down front? Okay, um, I'll start off here, um, with Mr. Gary Stevens. Gary, are you here? Come on up, Gary. Yep, and this is a certificate of recognition from the County of Surrey, uh, for the Yakon Valley Senior Games, uh, presented to Gary Stevens. Gary, uh, certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, competing in the bowling singles competition this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. There we go. And this is, uh, for Ms. Kathy Taylor. Kathy, you here? So, welcome. Uh, Kathy, uh, this is a certificate of recognition for the Yakon Valley Senior Games for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a gold medal in the pickleball mixed doubles competition, presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations. And this is for Mitchell Taylor. Oh, yeah? Yeah. All right. Thank you. This is a certificate of recognition from the County of Surrey to Mitchell Taylor. Um, certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a gold medal in the pickleball mixed doubles, presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations. And this is for Linda Tilly. Linda, not here tonight, sir. Phyllis Wagner. Not here. Derek White. Okay.
Randy Moore. Everybody knows Randy Moore. First of all, Randy, I want to thank you for all your service for our country.
God and country, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Randy Moore. Yakon Valley Senior Games hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a gold medal in mini golf competition, silver medals, silver medals in the softball throw and the billiards competition, and bronze medals in the football throw, ba- ba- bounce, bouncy, how you say it, bocce, bocce, and horseshoe competition. How many is that? One, about five or six things there, okay? Presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations. Daniel Merrick. Daniel Merrick, certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a silver medal in the ten K run. Good gracious.
A long way.
I say, it's bother, it hurts me just to think about it. Presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations. Only six miles. How long did it take you?
It was fifty-five minutes, something like that.
All right. Golly, that gives me a headache. All right. Sherri Smith. Sherri Smith. Mary Jane Russell. And Tracy McGuire. Well, I chose those three for last. They must be tired because they all got, uh, medals for line dancing. I was gonna get them to show it a little bit. All right.
You can shut, you can start us off there, Larry.
Yeah, I draw a line.
Uh, Jackie Lewis. Okay. Come on up. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackie Lewis, Yakon Valley Senior Games, hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals in the Silver Striders Fun Walk, also earning a gold medal in the tennis doubles, a silver medal in the basketball shooting and croquet competitions, and a bronze medal in the football throw, pickleball doubles and pickleball mixed doubles competitions. Well, that's a bunch. Presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and congratulations, sir. Uh, Winston Kobe. No, that was a pickleball. Uh, Robert Keck. Yep, come on down. Robert, thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Keck, represented by the Yakon Valley Senior Games and participation therein, a certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, competing in the hundred meter dash and the pickleball singles competition, also earning a gold medal in the tennis doubles competition and a bronze medal in the pickleball doubles, tennis singles, and a fifty meter dash competition. Very good. Presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What did you say in that stride? Catch him if you can. There you go. Susan Howlett. No. Don't see Susan. Ronnie G. Bennett. Come on up, Ronnie.
Ronnie's my neighbor, father of mine, old friend, Ronnie. We're here tonight for your participation and the Yakon, to recognize your participation in the Yakon Valley Senior Games. And you hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning the gold medal in the billiards competition. That don't surprise me one bit. Uh, presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, and congratulations, my friends.
Linda Edwards. That was for line dancing as well, Larry. John Forsman. Elizabeth Freeze. Hobert Freeman. They said they could teach you. Okay. Hobert Freeman is, uh, Yakon Valley Senior Games hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, competing in the fif- fifty meter dash, the hundred meter dash and the two hundred meter dash competitions and earning bronze medal in the four hundred meter dash competition, presented this twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations. Bonnie Hensel. For pickleball doubles competition. And Tommy Holloman. Tommy Holloman, Yakon Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a gold medal in the horseshoes competition, presented this the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations.
All right, Michelle Brown. Hey, how are you? Michelle, Yakon Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games in the bowling singles competition at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, presented this the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations.
Get bowling.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Judy Abscher. I might know this next, Mr. John Brain. We're grandparents together, so. Uh, John, you, Yakon Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon, Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a silver medal in the tennis mixed doubles competition and a bronze medal in sing- in tennis singles competition. Presented this the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. And this is his better half. Uh, Mrs. Patty Brain. I'd say you is his partner too, right? Yeah, it's okay. At Yakon Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, earning a silver medal in the tennis mixed doubles competition. Presented this the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Next, my old softball buddy, Gary Coller. Played many softball games together. I think he's, I think he's still big enough to hit it. I didn't know he's a pool shark either, but, uh, Gary, the Yakon Valley Senior Games is hereby presented this certificate, certificate of recognition for representing Yakon Valley Senior Games at the two thousand and twenty-two North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, earning a gold medal in the billiards competition. Presented this the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Yeah, you want to come up and say a few words?
Yeah, I want to thank the commissioners and, um, and everybody for highlighting one of the positive things going on in our community nowadays. It's a, it's a great program and we really appreciate all y'all's support. Um, so if I got just a minute to give a brief overview of our program, okay. So this program, Yakon Valley Senior Games operates under the umbrella of Surrey County Parks and Recreation, and, um, it's one of fifty-three sanctioned programs in the state of North Carolina, and North Carolina has sixty thousand, uh, senior adults aged fifty or better that we serve in this program, and that's the largest in the nation. So we have set the bar for California, New York states, people that's bigger than us and states that have more seniors than us. Uh, they look to us to set the bar for senior programs, um, that provide a healthy and encourage a healthy and active lifestyle for seniors year round. Um, and so specifically to our Yakon Valley program, we had a hundred and forty participants this year, and these are some of the twenty-seven folks that represented us at the state level. So they qualify locally in the spring and then the fall, um, into the year, they go to state finals in their respective events. And so congratulations, once again. I'd like to get a group picture of all y'all before you head out tonight. So job well done. We're very well represented, uh, at the state level, so, um, we have twenty-five different sporting events, about thirty different arts events. That includes cultural arts, literary arts, heritage arts and performing arts. So there's a lot to get involved with, and you heard some of those different options tonight as they were getting those, um, activities read back to the, to the audience here. So, we do have some ambassadors here tonight. If I may recognize, um, Jackie Lewis, Bob Keck and Randy Moore. Again, if y'all don't mind standing up, these guys here make this program work. They're the participants and they're certified ambassadors, and without folks like these guys spreading the good news about senior games throughout our community, we wouldn't be as strong and as healthy as we are. So thanks again for y'all. Um, other than that, we're gonna be, it's perfect timing. Our signups are every March and we play in May and June. So March the thirty-first, uh, my registration will begin, and you'll find that information on our Surrey County Parks and Recreation webpage, our Facebook page. Um, you can find it at any local senior, uh, center or fitness center, um, and a few other areas around. Um, you'll see the signs out in your community and, um, and there are all the participants here, our previous years' participants will have forms mailed to them, um, to, as a convenience. So spread the new, good news about senior games, the opportunities that are out there, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you. Again, those that are here, bring a friend for the two thousand and twenty-three program. The finals are held in a bunch of different areas, so pickleball maybe in one place, mini golf in Raleigh, generally around the Raleigh area, Raleigh Durham. Yep. Clayton, as far as Clayton. Yeah, love to get a great picture if y'all have time.
All right, act like you're friends with one another. Hang up a little in the front row for me, please. Thank you very much.
And that, that was March the first for registration, not the thirty-first. We need you before the thirty-first. That's the deadline.
Okay, we'll, um, move along to our, um, open forum portion of our meeting tonight, and if there's, um, anyone here that wishes to come to, uh, the podium to speak to anything pertinent, uh, relevant to Surrey County and its citizens, its county government, uh, we welcome you to come forward. All you have to do is state your name and your telephone number and, uh, just come forward. So I'll open up the open for- forum portion of our meeting tonight, and if you would.
Well, I was inspired just by the senior citizens, and after I present tonight, I think I'll be even more so inspired and, um, realize maybe I need to get involved with that group. Anyway, my name is Betty Fellas. My phone number is three, three, six, seven, one, zero, two, eight, four, eight. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners, I am a citizen of our county, our state, our country, and I want to thank you for the opportunity I have to share my concerns. As I stated in an email that I sent to you recently, our county and our state need stricter laws and tougher laws to protect all citizens from aggressive, uncontrolled dogs. And I advocate from personal experience, and I want to say that I love dogs. I have owned dogs most of my life, even big dogs, but they were trained, they were controlled, and they obeyed. They were very submissive to us as owners. Over the past twenty-three months, I have had four aggressive dog incidents in my neighborhood, three happened in my own yard, and the last one happened right across the street from where I live. So all four times, this almost a hundred pound dog was at large, off of leash and not controlled, and the dog is not controlled by voice commands from owner. And in each incident, when I had to protect myself and my dog, who is only forty-five pounds and elderly, she's fifteen years old, she's a very submissive dog, listens to voice commands. And according to North Carolina General Statute sixty-seven dash four point one two C, a potentially dangerous dog means approached a person when not on the owner's property in a vicious or terrorizing manner in an apparent attitude of attack. And that's happened four times. So we as a county have to have stricter laws to protect citizens. And I'll tell you about each incident a little bit, but right now my entire neighborhood is held hostage by this aggressive dog because it's not controlled by the owner. I have tried to befriend this dog. I have never had a dog who would not like me. I, in my previous employment, I was involved with healthcare. I went into people's homes. I had German shepherds that laid at my feet. I had pit bulls that were on the couch beside of me. I have never had a dog that was aggressive toward me. And as a senior citizen, I am concerned about myself, my dog, my family and my neighborhood. And I'll just briefly tell you about each incident. Uh, we moved into our new neighborhood in March, two thousand and twenty-one. That's when the first incident happened. I was getting out of my car. My dog is on a leash. I'm bringing her to visit our new home, and I get her out of the car, and the dog is loose in its yard. Dog charges at my dog. I'm going in a circle with my dog on a leash to try to keep the dog from jumping on my dog. Again, this dog is almost a hundred Again, this dog is almost a hundred pounds. My dog is forty-five pounds. And the owner of the dog said, oh, he's just curious. Well, he didn't sound curious to me, snarling, but I thought, okay, we're the new kid on the block. We will give him the benefit of the doubt. So the owner grabs the dog by the collar, drags him home. And on, okay, the next incident that happened was September the twenty, twenty twenty-one. Eleven o'clock at night, I take my dog out to the bathroom. Um, don't see or hear that dog, so I think we're safe. We go out. Go around to my side yard. We come back and the dog is charging at me at my front steps. And I was terrified because, I mean, there's nobody else out at night. The owner's not out. The dog is out loose. My husband's in bed asleep. I'm yelling for the dog to back down. He will not back down. I'm kicking at him and trying to get my dog safely away. My husband wakes up, comes out, gets between us. At that time, the owner comes out again, drags the dog home by the collar because the dog will not avoid, obey voice commands. And then on April the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, I was actually on my back deck. And by the way, this is the only place I am safe on my own property. I'm not safe in my front yard, either side yard or front porch, because this dog has shown to be aggressive. And the dog in April of two thousand twenty-two is out of his collar. He's in my yard. He's showing dominant position with a husky that's also at large, running loose in our neighborhood. At that time, I'm watching as the owner struggles to get the collar back on the dog because the dog keeps avoiding the owner. And she actually finally gets treats for the dog to quote bait him, get him back under her control. She has a leash, drags him home. And again, I guess he was rewarded because he got treats. And June the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, I, we came home from church Father's Day night. And I took my dog out on a leash. Each time my dog has been on a leash when these incidents have occurred, because I always walk around on a leash. We um go to the backyard and this owner's truck is not in the driveway. So I assume the owner and the dog, I've assumed the owner's not home, the dog is not anywhere to be seen. But while we're there in the backyard, the dog, or the owner drives up, opens the door, the dog jumps out and heads right toward us. Knocks my dog down, starts biting her, pulling out her hair. And my dog is totally defenseless. I am defenseless. The owner comes, drags the dog away again. And then the last incident was recent February the tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, the dog is again at large, loose. I do not know this. I go out my front door and I'm going straight across the street, not toward the dog. The dog lives to my west. I'm going north and to turn right, which would be east. And I hear that dog. I turn around. He's probably as close as this gentleman is to me. And I am totally, I have pepper spray, but I have no time to use it. That dog is charging toward me. You're talking about a hundred pounds. And only thing I have, of course, is my, my heel. I start kicking the dog and my dog goes down and I'm kicking as that dog is circling us. He bites my dog. And neighbors heard. My husband thankfully was home because if he had not been home, I probably wouldn't be here to tell you tonight. I would not be able to speak. Um, so my husband was able to get the dog to back down. And it seems that over and over again is me and my dog that this dog targets. Another neighbor heard and he came out and was able to get the dog cornered and back into the house. Owner was not home, present. So my dog wasn't even able to get up this time. She had to be carried home. So I'm advocating to say we have to have stricter laws to protect our citizens. Our street that we live on is has moderate traffic. And people in my neighborhood like to walk and it's deemed a safe neighborhood by the city. We're in city limits. But my neighbors refuse to walk by my house and my neighbor's house because of that dog. That dog is controlling our neighborhood. And no dog is paying taxes. We're paying the taxes. And that dog has more freedom right now than we do. So we have to have stricter laws to protect our citizens. What about the small children? What if I had been a child? What if I had been much smaller in frame? What if the dog had got me on the ground? You know, we have to do something. Is there not a cause? You know, I feel like it's almost like David against Goliath. And we have to do something to protect before there's a worse incident.
Thank you, Ms. Fellows.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is Don Fellows. My phone number is three, three, six, seven, one, zero, eight, eight, three, two. I'm here to advocate for my wife. I actually have seen what's taken place. As far as neighbors, we try to be neighborly. I've been in ministry thirty years. That's an important part of ministry is being a good neighbor. Uh, this is, this is kind of entering in it. I, as well, love dogs. I've gotten along with this dog. I, it seems like men seem to get along with this dog fairly well. I'm concerned that when alls were told is take pictures and alls you do is going to get a fine. And if what happens next time, you get another fine, maybe more, is that really deterrent? I would think that it might be good to be a little more proactive when somebody speeds in their excessive speed, they have to go and take a class and see videos and things like that. Um, I think something like that might be good for someone who is an aggressive dog. Also, I think it might be good if that doesn't work, is if there's some sort of a thing where they have to go through obedience training, owner and dog. Uh, because I don't like to see dogs taken from, I, I really don't want to see the dog taken from owner. She loves her dog. We love our dogs. I, I feel that she's probably never been taught how to train a dog. And so, but with the concern, especially of my wife and what she's gone through, especially this last time, I certainly would like to think that something could be done. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now we're behind, so I'll be brief, I promise. Melissa Hyatt, three, three, six, seven, five, five, eight, five, six, six. So I want to ask y'all a question. I don't want you to answer it. I just want you to think about the answer. Have you ever had a wreck? You ever had a house fire? Have you ever known someone that needed CPR in an emergent situation that there wasn't a citizen standing by that knew how to perform it? Or have you ever known a person that was enjoying one of our beautiful hiking trails and fell off Pilot Mountain or Hanging Rock and needed the assistance of the rescue squad? That's why I'm here tonight. They're going to do a presentation for you. But I'm not here in my professional role. I'm here as a citizen because if there is one agency in this community that I have stood behind since I was eighteen years old, it is the Miami Rescue Squad. Um, last year, they assisted a thousand four hundred and forty-seven individuals. That's not just individuals. That's also our county departments and our municipal departments that they assist, our sheriff's office, our highway patrol, our EMS. As you all know, I'm the mother of an officer and an EMS person, so it is very important for me for them to show up. Because when you're out on the highway working, we all know what happens. People are too busy with who's in that car and what just happened, then they aren't be paying attention. These gentlemen are the ones that help keep it safe, once they've extricated somebody from that space. Now, the services they provide, we all know they come with an expense. Y'all do the budget. I'm not going to talk to you about that. You know more about that than I do. But I do want to tell you this. In county budget terms, last year, they had six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight hours by volunteers. Now, that sounds like a lot. When you've got a handful of maybe twenty volunteers, that's well, more than a lot. But in nonprofit numbers, that's a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. In county budget numbers, that's four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Because we do things at a lot cheaper rate with nonprofit work. Across the community, across the country, lots of counties and municipalities are going to less human service work and more contract work with nonprofits. And I'm not suggesting that. But I will say, I have a concern that in four to five years, we might be there. Because I never thought five years ago, we'd be paying for volunteer firemen. But volunteerism is at an all-time low. And it is very hard to find somebody to volunteer between eight to five, when they need to be at work supporting their family. And I would hate drastically for it to be one of my kids or grandkids, or you or one of your kids or grandkids that need them. And they're all at work. Because we don't let our kids leave school with a pager anymore to go do fire calls or rescue squad calls. So please listen intently to them tonight and think about those five questions I ask you. Because unfortunately, of those five questions, four of them have happened to me. And every single one of those times, even with a house fire, those two gentlemen right there showed up. I don't even live in their jurisdiction. I live in the county. But they go where they've got to go when they need to be there. And I want to make sure that we don't ever have the incidence of a citizen that needed the rescue squad to show up, that everybody was at work. So thank you, thank you for all that you did.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Okay, I'll close the open forum section of our meeting tonight and call on Ms. Libby Radford from the Tiny Tigers Rescue for her program update.
Told you I had your mugshot. Dear Commissioners, Chairman Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, and Mark Marion. Thank you for allowing me to address this issue again tonight with my concerns. And thank you for all you do for Surrey County. As you are aware, I'm here to review a TNR program, which is trap, neuter, and release the feral cats in our counties. Many states and counties across the United States have implemented this and have excellent outcomes. It saves tax, packs dollars, healthcare needs in the emergency room, and in some cases, lives. Um, a TNR program would greatly, greatly help with expenditures of our tax dollars. And I want to pass out some information here that I have. The expenses for staffing, for insurance, work comp, health insurance, dental, uh, equipment and that sort of thing, and replacements of whatever they're using for equipment there. Like I said, they charge, um, they estimated that it costs two hundred and twenty-nine dollars to euthanize a cat. One cat, one female cat, it's been documented, can have at least twelve kittens a year. So do the math. Twelve times twelve, twelve times twelve. At this time, I'd like for you to review the seven-year period here of the cost for the animal shelter. And I don't even know if I can say this figure or not. One million eight, eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. And that's what it costs to euthanize the cats for those years. They put down eight thousand one hundred and nine cats. And we still have a problem. It didn't even put a den in it. I mean, it's unreal. And the county budget this year for the animal shelter went up another forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And I'd like to ask you, have you been to um the middle schools lately? I was ashamed when I went to one recently. I was just so embarrassed. It's just so rundown. It was awful going up the steps to a program there. It was just, it was terrible. And we're just, I'm just so concerned that we're putting our tax money in the wrong places when there is an option that we can do about these cats, rather than send all this money to the animal shelter just to put them down. It's not making any headway at all with the problem at all. And I'd like to thank the animal shelter, too. They do a good job. And I, I'm not trying to put anybody out of work, but it's just not helping. We're not getting there with this. The TNR program, several states, like, um, well, Forsyth County went down to fifty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars in a matter of two years. And they had over a two-million-dollar budget at their animal shelter. And I've got all the stats and figures here from every county in the state. And I've got information here from other states. And a TNR program is the only answer. And if we could implement one through the county some way, we could really use some tax money in some other areas. And I appreciate you.
And I have a slideshow, really quick presentation of the, the work we've been doing with the money you guys have provided that we are very appreciative of. Is there an email address I can send it to so, or can I do screen mirroring? Does anyone know?
Are they going short tonight?
No.
Okay.
Did I have a question for you? This, this, this report that came from uh our animal shelter.
Yes.
That we put down eight, over eight thousand cats in the last seven years.
That's true.
And did I understand you right? What does it cost to put a cat down?
They said two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
What does it, I mean, I leave off all the person, all of the, the, the uh management or the employees and then all the help and all that. What does it actually cost?
One dime.
One dime.
They give them a pill on their food, their last meal, to kill them.
But it cost us two hundred and thirty-nine, well, the average is here. Okay.
What are you saying?
Well, now, when Mr. Haw, when Sheriff Hawks was there, they had deputy sheriffs that worked it. And I think there's still deputy sheriffs now. There's four there that are around the clock. From what I understand, from um From what I understand, from, let's see, what was her name? Scarlett Samuels? At the, she's over the animal shelter now.
Last year, we, we contributed to the animal controls, this is animal control in general, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And from January one to January twentieth, I mean twenty, and from one twenty-one, you spent, well, you see the figures there. Two hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars in one year to put cats down. And you, we have vets that are fixing them, or what's the price now?
Um, I think between forty and sixty, depending whether they're male or female.
And I have a neighbor that has about sixteen cats at his feed barn that he wants to work with them and get fixed, and he wants them back. A lot of people want these cats back out in the country because they're good for rodents and everything in these barns.
That's the program.
That's the R in TNR, return.
Trap them, you neuter them, and you release them.
What's the lifespan of a cat?
Anywhere from eighteen years.
It would depend on, you mean a fair, like a stray feral cat?
Well, I mean, yeah, just.
An average.
Cat that you're willing to neuter.
Two to four years without any intervention.
Two to four years?
That's a stray cat.
Yeah, the ones that we're, that we're working with.
But if you take it in the house and feed it and look after it, it'll live eighteen, twenty years?
Eighteen to about twenty-two years.
Do you have any way to estimate how many feral cats or wild cats or cats out in the woods there are in Surrey County?
Well, the animal shelter told me they were full now. They couldn't take anymore the other day.
But, I mean, would you?
They just keep multiplying.
Is there any way that anybody's got a guess about that? Hundreds, thousands?
Thousands and thousands.
Probably pushing a hundred thousand.
Well, it looks like to me that it would just take an extraordinary amount of manpower and labor. So, are you saying that your folks would do this? Or are you looking for the county to trap these things and?
We, we are advocating for us, for our volunteers to continue doing this work in partnership with the county, with help from county funds. But we do have, we would provide the manpower.
What would you expect out of, well, their part?
We really don't have a figure. We're just asking for your continued support. What you've given us so far has made a tremendous impact. I can pull up my numbers. I was gonna give you guys a slideshow presentation, and I'm sorry that didn't work out. But so far, we've done over a thousand, and I don't think we've even used half the money.
How long did it take you to condition and neuter a thousand cats?
Between now, um.
You're saying y'all have caught a thousand cats and neutered them?
And at two hundred and twenty-nine dollars apiece, that's how much money it's been saved. Because they didn't have to go through the animal shelter.
Well, if they'd ever got.
If they.
Mom would never get, get caught, be taken over there, would she, Liv?
Well, that's true, but the ones that she, that say, that saves the county money, what they're doing. And the other counties, a lot of them, like Forsyth and everything, they use the deputies that were working for the animal shelter to trap these. They've already got the traps. They've already got the vehicles to transport them with. And that's how they brought their budgets down.
If you look, let's just take a county like Forsyth or Wilkes or whatever. And you look at their numbers seven years ago, and you look at their numbers seven years later, is the cat intake to their shelter down?
It's amazing you ask that, because I've got that very information right here.
I was afraid you'd have it.
Yeah. You stay out of this. Two thousand and two, all right, the operating capital for them was, help me say this, I'm not good with money.
One million, two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Okay, and this, all this is on the Department of Agriculture pages. You can pull this up for yourself. And then, um.
They took two oh five.
It came down to fifty-one thousand two hundred and fif- fifty-nine dollars.
But they're taking in, so, they, they.
Oh, I'm talking about the number of cats.
Right.
They've taken in two hundred and five cats. They're euthanizing. Euthanizing thirty-one. Their rates are a lot lower than ours.
No, that was after the TNR that they did.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right here is the cats. They took in five thousand one hundred and seventy-four cats.
And then seven years later, how many did they take in?
Yeah, right.
Two oh five.
It went from five thousand to two hundred and five?
Right here it is.
And that's Forsyth County? Can you make them extinct? Well, I mean, stray ones, yeah. I've got a, well, I've got a beagle, and he don't like the cats getting his rabbits. I mean.
That's inhumane. I'm not gonna vote for you next time.
I'm just, I'm just messing with you.
Okay.
All right, I see the numbers, the, the monies that were spent towards animal control in Forsyth County. The number of cats, we're talking, what'd you say, five thousand down to two hundred and some? Is that right?
Five thousand one hundred and seventy-four cats in two thousand and twenty-two.
What did Forsyth County do? I mean, financially, did they, did they contribute to?
No, they developed a TNR program through the animal shelter. And then they adopted them out, or they shipped them somewhere, or they found homes for them through agencies like.
So you're saying if we start the program?
You'll see a lot of savings in your tax dollars. A lot. It will save you money. I mean, I could be here all night quoting figures. It's unreal how much it would save you.
And Commissioner Harris, to answer your question, that's kind of the goal, is to eventually have the feral cat population to go extinct.
Yeah, well, that was, I was.
But they will, you know, they age out, they pass away, and to not have twelve take the one's place, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's, that's exactly our goal.
What, 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 what needs to happen, other than we say we'd like to start the program?
Well, we've already started it, I mean, to some extent.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
I mean, we, them a lot. They're volunteers.
How much money have we put into this program?
I will have to look that up. But we have, just out of your funds, we've done two hundred and eleven cats since July, just with your money. We also have private funds that come in for it, and we have city.
City, city gave you.
Yeah.
We're paying forty or fifty dollars versus two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Yeah, and the cat gets to live, for, for the most part, and returned to wherever.
It's still. We have twelve more babies.
This, the one million eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars is cats and dogs. We have to take that into account.
No, it's cats. They said it was cats. Where are you looking at?
If you take the animal shelter from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, and you, you say this is what we spend, animal shelter, that is dogs and cats. So that number, that two twenty-nine is actually like half that. I'm with you, I'm with you. But that total, that total number there is paid, that, that's what we pay for animal shelter. I got you, I got you, I got you, man. But what I'm saying is, that figure comes off the budget sheet. You showed us that on the budget sheet, and you add all those together, it equals one million eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. So it's cats and dogs.
Well, the entire thing for animal control was six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But I'm saying, over time, over time, if you add all that up, so it's one million eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. You're saying, you're saying this is what it cost us to run, to run the animal shelter from fif- from two thousand fifteen, but, but we don't take in just cats?
No, that's not the total cost for running the animal shelter. I have no idea what the total cost for running them is. I do not know. This is for cats only.
And that's what it cost us from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one?
Well, it costs six hundred and seventy-five thousand to run it in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. That's what we budgeted.
But not just for cat, not.
That was, that was, that was the whole thing. Okay, this, this is.
But I, I'm just saying that it went up forty-four.
Okay, all right, yeah, I understand. Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, all right.
Libby, who's gonna do the trapping and the neutering and the releasing? Who's responsible?
I thought y'all were gonna volunteer for that.
I could probably help on the releasing part.
Well, eventually, if it's a county program, it would go through the help, it would go through the animal shelter. But right now, we have volunteers that are willing to do it.
So you're saying if we contribute more to the volunteers to help get this, to pay the veterinarians to get this done, we would certainly spend our money better, doing it that way than throwing it into the animal control.
They drive their own private vehicles.
About two hundred people a year, every time we put one to sleep.
They drive their own private vehicles. They have their own traps. They take off work and take them to the vet and get them spayed or neutered. And then they take them back and either place them or return them to the owners or that sort of thing. They, you don't have to pay their insurance. You don't have to pay their work comp. You don't have to buy them a uniform. You don't even reimburse them for gas. They're volunteers.
Right, well, but still, yet, that, that's the way it would, if we decide to do so.
Yeah, it'd save you a bunch of money.
It contributes some to, to, to help pay for the veterinarians to do the neutering.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Everything else is volunteer.
Well, I live over in, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
I'm doing, and then, that should show a big difference in our funds, uh, use, and, and it'd be a whole lot less in animal control.
And if it don't, I'll pay you back.
You'll pay me back, this back.
I live over near Elkin. Where are y'all catching all these cats?
All over Surrey County.
Yeah.
All you'd have to do is message our Facebook, and we're working with Steve Yocely in the city. Uh, we've done a lot over at the Greystone condominiums where he lives. It does, we're, we're not a, a, adverse to going anywhere that we need to go and helping anyone we need to help. It's, it's the cats that we're doing it for.
Okay.
So, when you're in the rural countryside, I mean, you specifically target cats? Don't you catch anything else in those traps besides cats? Don't you catch possums and scones and kittens?
We also have what are called drop traps, and they're not the live traps where anything can go in. This is where you target one specific thing, and you're, you hold the trap over it and from far away. And so then, when your target gets in there, you pull it down.
Where are you at when that's, how far away from you?
Sometimes about a hundred feet, two hundred feet, just depending on how long your rope is, the farther away, the better.
The, the only thing I say about the savings, and you, you know, I'm not gonna dispute you figures, I'm sure it's a savings. But two hundred and twenty-nine dollars versus the cost of volunteers catching it and veterinarians spending it, would be presuming that the animal control did wind up and go out and aggressively hunt all these cats down in the woods. I, I'm just saying, probably, they wouldn't never catch that many of them to start with, would they?
They, well, they don't go out there.
I know, so they wouldn't catch them. So I mean, compared to two hundred and twenty-nine dollars versus.
You're talking about the system that we have now with animal control, right? They're not gonna catch them and.
I don't think they're gonna go out and aggressively hunt them like you folks do.
But these programs did.
How much it would cost at the animal shelter, if you're, it's, it's cats that probably would never get in the animal shelter to start with. So this is more of a humanitarian thing and a cat thing than it is, because I don't believe all those cats that you're catching and saving would ever wind up in the, in animal control.
It's a safety and a help thing too, because there's a lot of diseases and rabies and stuff that they carries. There's a cat scratch fever that's very serious, and it's, it's, it's safety for the county too, that we don't allow all these feral cats to run loose. And Bill wants that opossum that you caught. He's been wanting a pet opossum.
And, and also, I'd like to say, those, those cats that you're saying that are down in the woods, now, we're, the animal control is probably not gonna end up with the mama, because you can't catch the mama. The mama will drag her babies up somewhere where they're gonna get tamed by humans a lot of times, and they will become the county's problem, because that's mostly the intake that you get at the shelter. If you do ask the shelter, it's the kittens that the mama drags up to a place near humans. The humans get the kittens, take them to the shelter, never get the mom, never get her fixed.
You ever catch a wild cat?
Absolutely.
Yeah, figured you might. What do you do, bake for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, just make sure I understand, so it, it's budget time, getting close to budget time for us. So you're saying if we contribute more to the volunteers, it'll save us a lot of money in the long run?
It would.
It decrease, and you said if it didn't, you'd pay us back?
I did.
All right.
And you know how it is at a budget at home, sometimes when you budget, you're leaving. When you got a budget at home and you have an expense over here, sometimes you have to shift your money. You've just got a certain amount of money coming in through taxes. And if this continues, I feel sorry for y'all doing a budget.
Can you give me a number or refresh my memory? Chris, do you know, Sandy, do you know, do you know how much money we gave you?
About thirty thousand?
It was more than that.
I thought it was forty, or forty-four.
It was part of investing, sir. I know it was, but.
About seventy-five thousand combined, right? Between the city, between the city and county.
So you got about seventy-five thousand from city and county. How much do you want?
Whatever you'll give us.
And honestly, Tiny Tigers is just here to ask for continued support and to show our appreciation. We're not here to give throughout a dollar that we're like demanding. That's not happening. We're just saying, we are so grateful for what you've given us so far. We wanted to show you what we've been able to do with that and to ask for continued support.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming.
You what will happen if we don't do something.
Yep. Yeah, these stray cats and mean dogs are a problem, that's for sure.
I mean, we had, we talked the other, the other meeting that I attended about the resource officers in the school. And you know, there's a lot of needs in the school, and you know, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm just gonna say it. This is such a waste of taxpayers' money what's going on now, when there is a better solution.
Well, you know, the, 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 you know, some of the animal adoption groups in Surrey County that work primarily with dogs, they have advocated for us to have a spay and neuter policy. You know, there's a, there's a huge discussion about, you know, this is a rural county.
Yeah, it's hard to say who belongs.
You, now, you, you're getting, stepping on some serious toes. But, you know, a spay or new, a spay and neuter policy in Surrey County would save a tremendous amount of resources in animal shelter. There's no doubt about it.
There's no way to enforce it, not, not, not within our.
Well, it, it's just like, you know, dilapidated junk houses and, and trash. I mean, you know, it's, you would break the taxpayers trying to mitigate every single situation that, you know, that everyone thought was serious. I mean, that's just the bottom line. You'd have to paint it with a big, broad brush and do the best you can in regards to taxpayers' money in order to keep from taxing the people to death. I mean, you can be the government all you want to, but, you know, that's, you know, that's, it's just a, it's a hard, hard thing to do. But I hope you vote for me next time, Libby.
I will. I'm sorry. I didn't mean, I said that in anger. I get mad a lot just to ask Eddie.
I'm just making fun. You, you vote against me all you want to.
Depends on how much you listen to us.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay. Y'all can keep those papers too.
Thank you.
And study them, study them, study them.
Thank you, Libby.
Yeah, well, Mr. Nathaniel Webb, Rescue Squad Association. And Mr. Corey Scares. Corey, how in the world are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Always good to see you.
Yes, always good to see y'all. Well, good evening. Thank you all, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners and County Manager, for having us tonight and allowing us to come present to you guys. Before we, I get started, I would like those that are here on behalf of the Mount Air Rescue Squad to please stand. Uh, these gentlemen and ladies are primarily our Board of Directors.
Why don't you recognize these nice folks?
Every single one of them. Here we go. All right, here on the front is Mr. Ricky Eldridge. He's actually former chief of the department. Every single one of them. Here we go. Alright, here on the front is Mr. Ricky Eldridge. He's actually former chief of the department, serves on our Board of Directors now. Um, in the red shirt is Mr. Steve Scott. He is our president of our Board of Directors. Behind him in the black shirt is, I'm sure you know, Mr. Richard Lowe. He is our vice president. Uh, board member Kathy Kluki is standing beside Richard, and I think I see Lewis back there in the back. Mr. Lewis Castle is also one of our Board of Directors too. And he's not gonna stand, but in the very back is Mr. Chad Hutchins, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hutchins for the City of Mount Air, and he's also on our Board of Directors.
Thank, thank you, folks, for coming.
Alright, so tonight we wanted to come and talk to you guys about a problem that we are having as a department. We're one of the oldest departments in Surrey County. We've been serving since nineteen sixty-one, um, well before I was ever thought of. Um, but I've been in the department for fifteen years now. Um, I served as assistant chief for four years, and this is my seventh year serving as chief. Um, if you'll advance to the next slide, please.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, amazing. Corey's got that. So right now, we're comprised, um, of twenty-five volunteer rescuers. No one at the department receives any pay. Um, we're all exclusively volunteers. We are chartered with the state of North Carolina for forty, and we'd love to be at forty, but twenty-five is the number we're at right now, the lowest we've been in several years. Um, as Melissa stated earlier, volunteerism is at an all-time low, and I explain it like this to people. In this economy, you can't get people to work for money, much less for free. Um, so that's what we're looking at. We provide rescue and medical service coverage to a hundred and seventy-seven square mile district. Um, that's the largest in the county, aside from the Sheriff's Office and EMS, which are, of course, countywide departments. Um, that is a third of the county, if you want to put it into perspective. Um, we're the only heavy rescue provider in our district, making us a countywide resource, as well as we have mutual aid contracts with Virginia counties that do not have heavy rescue. Um, collectively last year, our members logged seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three hours and nine-one-one call response, community service, meetings, trainings, and work details. Um, we were paged to more nine-one-one calls than any other volunteer agency in Surrey County, and it's been that way from some years, for some years. The only departments that surpass us are Surrey County Sheriff's Office, Mount Air Police Department, and Surrey County EMS, which again are countywide departments and full-time departments. Um, this just gives you an idea of some of the numbers I talked about, highlighted in yellow is the calls that we were paged to in two thousand and twenty-two. And in red are the only county departments that surpassed us in those call volumes. And I'll call your attention to the top right bar graph. Um, kind of gives you an idea of our busiest days of the week. We're always busy, but right in the middle of the week, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is always our busiest time. And on the bottom right bar graph, you can see our busiest times of day, and it's usually during working hours. Um, all of our volunteers are full-time paid people somewhere else, whether it be in an emergency service or teachers, or there's so many different jobs that our people do. Um, and most of them are working those eight to five hours. Go ahead, Corey. In two thousand twenty-two, we were paced to two thousand and ninety-eight calls. An additional two hundred sixteen events were comprised of community services, meetings, trains, and community service events. Uh, these were not nine-one-one calls, um, but the two thousand and ninety-eight were nine-one-one calls. That gives us a total of two thousand three hundred and fourteen calls for the twenty twenty-two year. Uh, we completed twenty-seven ambulance transports. These are transports where the citizens do not get a bill. Um, when Surrey County EMS is overwhelmed with call volume, or when we are standing by for local high school football games or middle school football games, we're the agency that transports, um, or in the event that there's a mass casualty incident or any event that overwhelms the EMS service, we are providing transport for free to these people. Um, in twenty, um, for our standbys that I briefly mentioned a minute ago, we did one hundred and twelve sport protocol fire and EMS standbys. And those EMS standbys, like I referenced, were standbys when the county runs out of EMS ambulances, paramedic ambulances to serve the citizens. So our talk, co- call total was twenty-three thousand, two thousand three hundred and fourteen, with an average daily call of six point three calls. Um, that's a lot for twenty-five volunteers to try to do, uh, especially when most of them are working during our peak call volume hours. Um, of the two thousand three hundred and fourteen calls, we responded to twelve hundred and seventy-eight calls for a total of fifty-five percent of our call volume. Saying that looks bad, that's fifty-five percent, that's, but you've got to keep in mind, volunteers, twenty-five volunteers responded to one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight nine-one-one calls for service. With that, I would say no major rescue calls or medical calls went unanswered. Um, we didn't miss our CPRs. We didn't miss our shootings, our stabbings, our rescues where someone was pinned or entrapped in a vehicle or needed rescuing off a high angle from ropes or a confined space. None of those were missed. Um, but we did miss the, um, calls here and there, the daily medical calls that we see a lot of, and unfortunately see a lot of the same people. Some of those were missed. This is another graph that gives you an idea of our busiest time of day. Um, this is a monthly and hourly graph. Um, that large influx portion that you see there is the, between the hours of eight and six o'clock. That's our busiest time, um, during any given day, any given week, any given month. So what I'm asking for tonight, um, I know a lot of our fire departments have paid part-time and even some having paid full-time staff. Um, us being the busiest department in the county and in the current situation we're in, I don't feel like it's unreasonable for us to be one of those departments. For a forty-five hour work week, fifty-two weeks in a year, two thousand three hundred and forty paid hours at fifteen dollars an hour, we'd be paying thirty-five thousand one hundred paid hours, thirty-five thousand one hundred dollars in paid hours. Uh, plus twenty-five percent, which is eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars in CPA taxes, FICO, federal taxes, et cetera, uh, for a total of forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. BFIS, which is the volunteer, um, insurance company that we use to ensure all of our vehicles, our station, and our workman's comp policy would be five hundred and one dollars per employee per quarter, which is two thousand and four dollars. I mean, yes, two thousand and four dollars quarterly with a lump annual sum of ten thousand and twenty dollars. You can read that fourth slide there, fifth slide there. I'm sorry, it just talks about, um, the social security, Medicare, all of the figures there of what it would cost, all in all. Um, our total request is fifty-five thousand dollars, and that is adjusted for uniforms, fees, and other miscellaneous expenses. Um, that is right on track with what a lot of the fire departments are doing, even less than some. Um, so we feel like that is a really reasonable request. We've sit down with our financial committee. We've sit down with our CPA that we already employ, um, which is also one of our Board of Directors, and we have, these are where the numbers are coming from, and we've actually talked to our insurance company and our Board of Directors as well. Um, as our requests for services are steadily increasing annually, volunteers are no longer enough to sustain a su- a suitable response model in our community. Um, during the last three years, we went through the, um, COVID pandemic. Um, and we, you know, even when we didn't have the money, we were cut, and we understood that our budget was cut during COVID to put money elsewhere, but we still responded to the calls when people asked for help. We spent money on personal protective equipment that we normally wouldn't have spent that much on, that we didn't necessarily have money to spend on, and we still answered the calls. Um, like I said, all of our volunteers work full-time jobs to provide for their families, and they still find enough time in their year to dedicate hundreds of hours and service to our community. Um, adding paid personnel would help ease the burden on volunteers and more importantly, ensure rescue response to the ill-injured and sick in our community. I ask that you please, you know, consider this request as not just a mon- monetary or monetary expenditure, but as an investment in the health and safety of our community. And also, I didn't put this in the slides, but I like to highlight that this also helps the departments around us. Departments that may not be able to meet their calls as well, that we can pick up those calls on occasion, and we, we already do as volunteers, but this would help having that nine-to-five spot with a part-time person every day, be able to get some of those as well. So what questions do you guys have? I've said a lot.
See, we have six rescue squads in Surrey County, County Pinnacle, is that correct?
County Pinnacle Fire Department, which has a small part of shows, we have six rescue squads, yes, sir.
And we, and we contribute as a whole to the association.
Yes, sir.
And y'all, who, who decides who gets what?
So we each submit a annual budget to the Surrey County Association of Rescue Squads. They have historically presented a unified budget to you guys, and then we, um, based off of what you get, based off of what you guys approve, we, they go back and whatever our percentage of our budget was is the percentage we get. So us being the busiest department, we're always the highest percentage. We're requesting the most. We get the most from that allotment from the county. Um, right now, we're at about sixty-four thousand is our part from the county every year.
Did that, was there any extra bump with our ARPA money's last year, Chris?
They received forty thousand five hundred in vesting survey funds.
So in addition to the sixty-five, so you got about a hundred and ten last year from the county?
We did, and we use that money as a capital expenditure for our radios. Um, in twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, the radios we have currently will cease to work on the county Viper, I'm sorry, the state Viper network. Um, we've been trying for years to apply for FEMA grants, local grants, state grants to, um, be able to purchase these radios that we need for communications. And finally, um, with the help of that grant and a grant from the city of Mount Air, we were able to purchase those radios this year. Um, so when twenty twenty-five comes, we can talk to each other and talk to the county.
Other question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, how many backup calls do you do, uh, in Virginia?
Very few. I would say less than ten a year. Um, the most recent one was this past summer when we went to do a water rescue, um, Assistant Carroll County.
One more question. You said you did about fifty-five percent of the calls that came in, about forty-five percent you couldn't respond to?
Correct.
But you didn't miss any major events, shootings, knifings, tragedies, roadside, yeah, serious accidents, and that, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
My question though is, if you could have responded to the other forty-five percent, and if perhaps you did get a paid position, that they would respond to those other forty-five percent or would try to, what kind of calls are about half of them, that other forty-five percent? I mean, is it, you said, repeat, callers that call you all the time about nine-one-ones, it usually is a life-threatening emergency, as I assume?
We.
Cats up in a tree, um, everything you could imagine, I mean.
Typically, yeah, I like Corey's.
Most of medical calls, um, breathing problems, back pain, chest pain, sick calls, things like that.
Assisting people out of the floor that have fallen and are not injured.
Get up, yeah.
We have, we have a, a lot of requests for like lift assist, only somebody who falls.
Yeah.
That isn't injured, just has nobody to help them up out of the floor.
Yeah.
They call nine-one-one, they send the rescue squad out or the respective first, first response fire department.
Is it fair to say, Corey and Nathan, that if you had a paid position, you would respond to a lot of those kind of calls that you choose not to now?
Well, I, I wouldn't use the word choose not to.
I choose not to, but not, uh, uh, that you're unable to.
Unable to is a better way to put that. Um, yes, if, the intent is if we have a full-time paid person, we will be responding to a hundred percent of our calls, with the exception of times that calls overlap themselves, and one person can only get a one call at a time.
Yeah. Yeah, and I didn't mean choose not to. I know you.
I understand, I understand.
Any of them, I just meant you only, you can do what you can do, but I'm just curious as to what that daytime man, would it be a daytime position problem?
It would be a nine-to-five. Um, that's what we're looking at right now. Uh, we have done our number figures. We have not sit down as officers of the department and board of the department to figure out the program in its entirety so far. Um, but we have figured what it would take to do this, and that's what we're coming to you tonight. But it would be a nine-to-five position ideally, because that is our peak hours.
And that person working nine-to-five would answer a hundred percent of our calls, plus if any other department, like, you know, Dobson Rescue Squad or Pilot Mountain had a major incident.
Yeah.
Need help on the calls, you know, they don't have the volunteers, they'd be able to respond to those as well.
And, and, and Surrey County Association of Rescue Squads currently has a model similar to the fire departments, where your house catches on fire, three fire departments are going to get enough personnel and equipment there. We're doing the same thing with major accidents and rescues, where you have two rescue squads going. Um, and there's been multiple occasions where we are heavy rescue and the surrounding squads, departments around us are not, that we have went and assisted and done primary rescue and secondary rescue to those other departments.
I'm gonna ask you.
Yes, sir.
Public consumption, what, uh, what percent of those calls are county, are run in the county, and what percent are in the city?
So we're roughly right now, eighty percent of our call volume is within the city limits of Mount Air, twenty percent within the county. Um, but the largest part of our district is within the county.
Largest part of your district's in the county, but you run eighty percent of the calls in the city?
We do. We run medical primarily in the city, so we are first responders in the city of Mount Air. Um, you're gonna get EMS, and you're gonna get us to run a medical call as well as Mount Air Fire Department. Um, in the county, we are primarily rescue. Um, we may run some medical calls here and there, um, where other departments have missed them, or EMS crews are on scene requesting additional help, but primarily we're running rescues, or your traffic accidents, anything like that. I tell everybody to explain our district in an easy way to understand. Highway fifty-two to Kick School Road, and every road that goes out of the Mount Air to Virginia is our district, and Highway six oh one all the way to, um, Cattle Ford Road.
Is it in your plans to make the presentation to the Mount Air City Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir, it is. I do plan on seeing the city commissioners. I'm not on the agenda yet, but I do plan on presenting this to them as well.
Being that, that, the answer that you gave, eighty percent, most is within the city limits of Mount Air.
Correct.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
Can I ask a question or two?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Just curious, in the past, we funded the squads through the association, so we get sort of a lump sum request. We fulfill it at some level, and you all break the funds up as, as you've agreed upon, I guess.
Correct.
With your request tonight, are you all looking to start requesting funds individually? And then the second part of that question is, or my second question, I should say, you know, the other squads are also talking about paid personnel.
So to answer the first part of your question, I'm here exclusively on behalf of Mount Air. Um, I'm not requesting this for the Surrey County Association of Rescue Squads. Um, and I believe there is one other department at least that is considering this. Um, you know, we've all been looking at different ways to fund and be able to get paid personnel, whether it be part-time or full-time. Um, but I know there is one other department, but tonight I'm exclusively requesting this as an annual allotment for Mount Air Rescue.
Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I'm gonna excuse us because our elevator rescue training started twenty-six minutes ago, and we're missing that. So thank y'all for hearing us tonight.
We're sorry we ran over.
No problem, no problem. It's a good reason. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thanks.
And all the board members, I know you, you're, you've been in it a long time.
Okay, Mr. Travis Frye, TDA update. Travis is our tourism coordinator.
Right. Well, good evening, commissioners. Uh, it's good to be here tonight. I am Travis Frye. I'm the tourism coordinator for both the Surrey County TDA and the Dobson TDA. I serve a dual role. And, uh, I'm gonna go over a little bit of the Surrey County TDA, because that's what we're most interested in tonight. And just to give folks a little bit of a background, I'm sure you guys know, but if, if you don't know, uh, the Surrey County Tourism Development Authority was established by the North Carolina General Assembly in two thousand and nine. Uh, we expend, uh, well, expands remitted occupancy taxes, revenues to promote travel and tourism in the unincorporated areas of the county. Uh, we also participate in the Tourism Partnership, which includes Dobson, Elkin, Mount Air, and Pilot Mountain. Those are the four municipal TDAs, including the Surrey County TDA into the Tourism Partnership, which manages a countywide marketing program with us providing funds to them, a third of our budget. Um, and of course, the partnership also, uh, markets things such as the Aken Valley NC dot com website, the Surrey Soccer Trail website, as well as attractions, events, outdoor recreation, wineries, wine tours. Um, they host travel writers and place ads in strategic locations throughout, which would be the digital marketing print and billboards that you see. Um, little highlight from the Surrey County TDA for financial. Um, our asset exceeded its liabilities at the close of the fiscal year by one hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in the net position. The authority, uh, total net position increased by forty-two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars, which is awesome. Uh, it's a result of increased revenue projections, budget with the uncertainty, uncertainty of COVID-nineteen. Uh, we really didn't know if tourism would be picking back up, or if, you know, we'd have a decline or, or, or whatever, but uh, luckily, we're getting back to pre-pandemic levels, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So we're starting to see a resurgence in, uh, tourism all over the county, and, um, that's a result, the revenues collected were three point seven percent over budget. And as I mentioned, the third of the total revenue for the fiscal year is given to the Tourism Partnership, so they can promote us countywide. Uh, let's talk about some fun things that we did in two thousand and twenty-two. I'll start, this, this was my first project. I came March fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, and this happened a couple of weeks after I was hired. So I, I was kind of, you know, cast by the lake of fire and, you know, figure it out and go, and, and I really enjoyed this program because it's something that the county can be proud of. And a lot of you were there, I think everyone was there, from the commissioners, uh, as well as some of our town commissioners as well. And this is the William G. Palmeroy Foundation in collaboration with Surrey County TDA. It generated the first Hungry for History historic marker in the state of North Carolina. Now, that's saying something there, uh, commemorating the unique local dessert soccer. This partnership was made possible by the Palmeroy Foundation Hungry for History Grant Program, which helps celebrate America's food history by telling the stories of local and regional food specialties. So now Dobson is part of a select group from across the United States who we spotlight our community. So now Dobson is part of a select group from across the United States who we spotlight our community's history through the Pomeroy Foundation roadside markers. And I just think that's really neat. And, uh, we have more plans coming up where we hope to get ground stake, a marker as well, since uh, that is also a Surrey County delicacy, if you wanna call it a delicacy. Um, do want to tell you a little bit about, um, our Saratoga Mountain Scenic Byway, um, Steering Committee and Grant. This was the next assignment that I received and I've, I'd never wrote a grant before in my life, but I figured it out. As I went and leaned on some of our tourism partners, um, to elevate this, uh, great byway. Um, the Saratoga Mountain Byways, uh, Steering Committee was created and meant to approve the bylaws presented in the corridor management plan, which was created before I came along. And we elected a chair and a vice chair. We worked on the grant process, which would include a letter of intent, an application through the grants.gov and items that would need to be considered in estimates along the Saratoga Mountain Scenic Byway. Uh, the Surrey County Tourism Department Authority took the lead in writing and submitting the grant project narrative and the grant project budget narrative to the NCDOT to be reviewed by the committee and submitted in early May. The byway would be routed through Mount Airy, Shelton Town, Westfield, Stokes County, Danbury, Hanging Rock, uh, Pilot Mountain, Warren Creek, and Bean Shoals. Uh, details of the project included kiosks in specific locations and signage and maps for hiking, biking, river accesses, and those were goals to kind of divert traffic away from our, uh, state parks. Uh, Hanging Rock and Pilot Mountain, if you know, are just overrun during the, um, the peak seasons. And we're trying to get more people interested in coming to our local rural areas where we can offer them the same type of things. Uh, biking and hiking and, uh, trails and stuff like that. So, that, uh, there's no announcement yet uh, on this, if we have got our grant or not. Uh, we submit it in May, we're supposed to hear back this month or next. Um, but they're also putting out a two thousand and twenty-three grant notification process that we'll be, uh, planning to, uh, go after as well. But we requested over a million dollars for this project. And like I said, the majority of it was for kiosks and, um, road frontage for parking and things of that nature. All right, music at the market. This is one that I created along with, uh, Chris. I talked to Chris about an idea that I had uh, to utilize, um, our Surrey County Farmer's Market. And I felt like it was underutilized. And of course, with the pandemic going on, we couldn't really do a lot there. But over the course of the next couple of months that I was working, I decided that it would be really neat if we could incorporate our music of old-time string band music and bluegrass music that is rich to our history in Surrey County and make it a focal point at the market. And so we started out, um, I think we started out in August. August twenty-six was our first show. And we had about fifty people show up. And I was a little disheartened. I thought, oh, gosh, well, maybe, maybe nobody's gonna support this. Maybe it's a bad idea. But then over time, we got more and more people to where we were steadily seeing over two hundred people attend the event. And it wasn't the same people that attended the events. We had people from Shelton Vineyards. We had people from Mount Airy. We had people that were just traveling, day trippers. We had folks from Ohio, Florida, all over that heard about it, whether it be through our marketing efforts, through our state magazine and other locations, um, or just local, you know, radio ads through WPAQ. We started seeing a lot of locals and tourists that came together. And it was a free event that we did. All six events were free. Um, they were sponsored, uh, so it helped out, uh, our cause where we basically didn't have to pay anything. It was, uh, it was, you know, well, it came out in the wash. So, um, we also added food trucks as well. It was, uh, something that I noticed that a lot of our county employees would come to. They'd get their food before they went home. So it was a service that I think worked really well for the community. And, um, we're planning on doing that again in two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll expand upon that in just a minute. All right, um, I'm gonna go quick here, because I know we're about out of time. Uh, Yakon Valley Wayfinding Signs, I wanted to highlight those as well. We're continuing to do that. Uh, Chris started that effort with the TDA, and that was one of their main focal points, uh, with Chris leading the TDA at that point. And we continue to do that. The Surrey County TDA and the Tourism Partnership of Surrey County collaborated to reface two existing Yakon Valley Wayfinding Signs in addition to one reinstallation. The first, if you look up on the, uh, right-hand side of your screen, that was at Salem Fort Christian Church where you pass over I seventy-seven on Zephyr Road. Um, this was originally installed early on by the Aken Valley Heritage Corridor, Corridor, uh, by Elkin and needed to be updated. The sign was re-faced to promote downtown Elkin, the vineyards and Mitchell River Access. Um, also want to make mention that the second one there on your left on the bottom, two miles past Salem Fort Christian Church near, um, Caps Mill Road, southbound. The second resurface, uh, was done to, again, to promote downtown Elkin Vineyards and Mitchell River. The third sign that was reinstalled, the big picture on the right, uh, that was located near, uh, Carolina Heritage Vineyards off Highway two sixty-eight near Elkin and was replaced, um, after a truck, uh, ran over it. And so it had to be reinstalled, even the footers. Um, they were pretty damaged, so we had to reinstall that.
Did you pay for that, Travis, or did we know who did it, or?
Uh, the way our insurance is, is it, it, our deductible would have been about the cost of having to replace it. So, um, but luckily for us, the Tourism Partnership pays for at least two to three signs per year. And so what I've been doing is I've been getting the Tourism Partnership to pay for all the refacings and all the ones that have been damaged. We get a lot of people that shoot out the signs with their guns and things. And so, um, we get the Tourism Partnership to cover those costs. And then any of the new signs that come along, which we're actually getting ready to put new signs down at Mountain Park, um, we pay for those. And the costs have steadily been going up on those. What used to be about seven thousand dollars per sign is now about eight thousand dollars per sign. Um, and they have a twenty-year lifespan on those signs. And we do get agreements and, uh, signatures, uh, through landowners to have that twenty-year easement. We hope to make it a perpetual easement where we can, you know, extend it for its lifetime, however long, you know, the program continues on. That's one of our goals, is to get rid of those twenty-year easements and eventually just get them to where they're lifetime.
Do we have one that got stolen? Didn't we have one that turned up missing, or am I thinking about something? Another county sign?
Might have to answer that one, Chris.
Yeah, we've had signs that actually got stolen. I didn't know if that was one of them.
They would have to really work for them, uh, to get them off, but it's, it's entirely possible. Um, but again, we're gonna continue this and, and we're one of only a few handful of counties that are actually doing this program. Most of the programs that you see that are wayfinding are within the city limits. And they're doing that within the cities now. But as far as a countywide program, we're one of, one of only a select handful, I'd say on the one hand, uh, in the state of North Carolina that do it countywide. And that really brings folks to our wineries, our river accesses and outdoor recreation. So, we're being very proactive in promoting our, uh, county.
And, and Daniel's department does a wonderful job keeping them.
Yes.
Cleaned it.
I was gonna say, Daniel and them, they go and they mow every single, um, area that we have in the county that has a sign up. And they do it out of the goodness of their heart. And we, uh, you know, we've got more signs that are coming up that they'll have to clear off and, uh, do, but they do a wonderful job, for sure. Um, the next slide that you see is our tourism-oriented destination signs. This is new for the Surrey County TDA. And we wanted to, uh, look at different things that were off the roads that may be hard to find. And a couple of those things that we talked about were golf courses. And so right now, the brand-new signs that have just come up are at Cedar Brook Golf. Uh, you'll notice those, um, on the roadways on Highway twenty-one, both directions. And then at Poplar Springs Road and Country Club Road intersections. Um, and they help direct tourists to places that, like I said, are off the road, and Cedar Brook being one of them. And we totally funded this for Cedar Brook. Uh, we paid for the signs. We paid for the installation. It's two hundred dollars per sign to do the, uh, yearly maintenance plan through the NCDOT. Um, so we're gonna continue to do this in Pilot Mountain at Pilot Knob Park, and then also go to Cross Creek Country Club. But this is in relation to the NCDOT, and that we, we actually put those in the NCDOT rightaways. And that's allowed for those signs. Um, as far as the Aken Valley signs, I don't wanna go into a lot of detail about it, but we did have some problems, uh, that arose, uh, where they were wanting to train, change the structures of where we put signs, whether it being in a NCDOT rightaway versus a private property. Now, all Yakon Valley signs have to be on private property. They cannot be in the state rightaway. So any of the signs that we have put out that are in the rightaways for NCDOT, after those twenty-year easements dissolve, we will have to move them, which will be expenses for us. But we do have fifteen years to plan it. Uh, so that is good news. But that's what we're doing with our, uh, tourism-oriented destination signs. And, uh, the next slide is our Surrey County Old Time Fiddlers Convention. That took place September the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We had over three hundred people attend this event. It was held at the Surrey County Service Center. If you remember, uh, you probably saw it in the Mount Airy News, uh, Surrey Community College, we weren't able to have it at that facility. We've had it there for years. It's a great facility. Unfortunately, due to COVID, uh, we couldn't do that. So we moved it to, uh, the county, uh, building, and we were really fortunate, uh, that a lot of people turned out. It brought a lot of people to the area and it highlighted our region. Uh, next year, let's see what the plans were. The plans for next year are gonna be, actually this year, I'm sorry, are June the fifteenth and sixteenth. So that is on our calendar, and it will be at the Surrey, uh, Community College. And we work in hand-in-hand with them. They provide a lot of the, uh, necessities for this organization, um, that, that work together with Old Time Fiddlers Convention. And it's just a bigger venue, better space. Um, so we're looking forward to being back there in June. Uh, this was really fun for us. The Mount Airy Christmas Parade and the Dobson Christmas Parade. Uh, we started highlighting our North Carolina Ground Steak Festival. That's gonna take place June the tenth, around the Courthouse Square of Aken Street. Uh, and also the Dobson Square Park and Crutchfield Street. It's gonna be a whole lot of fun. And this was, uh, collaboration between both organizations, uh, the Surrey County TDA and Dobson TDA. And I'm happy to report that partnership work, is working really well to where we can shoulder some of the burdens together, uh, rather than having to pay separately. Okay, so some fun things coming up in two thousand and twenty-three. Our first food truck rodeo is gonna be taking place April the twenty-second at the Surrey County Farmer's Market. Uh, we've just got permission to, uh, we got all of our legal, uh, uh, paperwork done, so now we can start getting, uh, food trucks out there. We're gonna kinda do it in a U shape around the building and structure. And then underneath the structure, we're gonna have some tables and chairs. And we're gonna feature Runaway Train from five until seven PM, which is a rock and roll group that does sixty, seventies, and eighties rock. So if you like good rock and roll music, come be with us. Um, we're gonna try this and see how it goes, but there was no r- risk to this event. Uh, the band is paying themselves through a sponsorship that they're getting. And we are actually gonna make money off the food trucks by charging a hundred dollars each, uh, to be, uh, around the market. So we're looking at about nine hundred dollars in profit for that event, um, that we'll get to do in April. The Surrey County Ground Steak Trail, uh, this is a collaboration between the Surrey County TDA, the Dobson TDA, and the Surrey County Partnership. What we want to do is funnel all things ground steak into one area. And that includes a website that'll feature what is a ground steak. A lot of people don't know what a ground steak is. Now, of course, I, I, you know, if you're from Surrey County, you know exactly what a ground steak is. And surprisingly, there are fourteen restaurants in Surrey County that serve ground steak daily. And they're gonna be featured on our trail. And that's what we, we, we wanna do. We wanna highlight those restaurants, make sure people stop at the trails, get them a detailed map, and include lodging for other trails that they can seek out. Uh, we have our Ground Steak Festival. That'll also be on that page, um, June tenth, like I said, is the date for that. That'll be from eleven until eight PM that night. And then, of course, our media coverage as well. We wanna funnel it there. In addition, we're gonna do physical maps and distribute it to the hotels, visitor centers, and restaurants. There's the Ground Steak Festival, ten to eight, be around the Courthouse Square and Dobson Square Park. We're gonna s- similarly do it to the Autumn Lease Festival, where we will have, uh, handmade crafts. And a lot of those will be local crafters. We wanna focus on our local artisans. Uh, as well as music. We have an agreement with WPAQ to run the bandstand down at Dobson Square Park, um, at the amphitheater. And they'll run music on the hour with a different band. And then we'll also have a kids' area with HDK Ranch. Um, they provide pony rides, they do bounce houses, they do all kinds of things. So it's something that you can bring your whole family to, um, and a good, just a good event for Dobson and the county overall. Surrey County Old Time Fiddlers Convention, uh, I said fifteenth and sixteenth. Correct me on that. It's the sixteenth and seventeenth, Friday and Saturday. Make sure if you're interested in it, come be with us. It's, it is a lot of fun. You learn a lot about Surrey County and the heritage. Here's our music at the market schedule, coming up July, August, uh, September, and October. I do have sponsors for this event. I didn't get to put them up, but essentially those sponsors will cover our costs, so we won't have to pay out of pocket for it. And then I'll take questions. If you have any. Wow.
I just say, I appreciate you, all the good things you're doing, Travis.
Absolutely. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much, Travis. We appreciate you. You're doing a great job. All right, uh, Chris Knoll, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items here. The first is in a separate packet that you received late last week. There is a, uh, memo and a copy of closed session minutes that have been approved but not released. Uh, there's a hundred and fifty items here, closed session items, going back to twenty sixteen up through March of last year. And it's, uh, recommended that you release these closed session minutes at this time.
Okay, gentlemen, you have the county manager's request to, um, recommendation to release closed session minutes going back for a bit. So, uh, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we release the closed minutes that has been sent to us for our review.
Okay, I have a motion of Commissioner Tucker to really, release the closed session minutes as described by the county manager. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Next item, you have a resolution. Uh, I'm just gonna read out the title of it. It's a resolution by the County of Surrey authorizing execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. So sometime back, the, the board approved a settlement with the state. As you know, we're receiving over eighteen years, a little over nine million dollars that we are using as a part of our, our substance abuse recovery program. And that dealt primarily with the four large, uh, manufacturers. Recently, the State Attorney General's Office has reached a settlement in the litigation against Walmart, Teva Pharmaceutical, Allergen Finance, Allergen Limited, CVS Health Corporation, CVS Pharmacy, and Walgreen Company. These, though, this settlement with these entities, as you will see in your packet, will bring an additional, make sure I get this correct, seven point two million dollars to Surrey County for these same purposes, for a total of sixteen point three million. That's in addition to the previous, um, just over nine million that the county will receive. These funds, this seven point two million will be received over fifteen years versus eighteen years. In order for us to, uh, receive the funds, we need to approve the resolution. As well, the board needs to authorize the county manager or the county, and actually authorize both of us to sign on your behalf, the agreement, which you have a copy of in your packet as well. So it's my recommendation that we do this if we even get it turned back into the Attorney General's Office so that we have, uh, done everything that's been requested of us to receive these funds.
Is this just one action?
This is the resolution. There'll be five separate, uh, three months for the five settlement disciplines that aren't gonna come at the same time. Sign them as they come in, just to get them done.
So the, we just need the one action to approve the resolution, and does that allow the county manager and yourself to act on our behalf on the others? So it's just one action. Okay. All right, gentlemen.
Motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion from Commissioner Marion to approve the resolution by Surrey County authorizing the execution of opioid settlements and the approving the supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Uh, second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. I, all these other actions, it's gonna follow the passage or the hope of the passage of this resolution tonight, uh, those agreements, I guess there'll be working agreements such as describing how the money can be spent, the limitations of which the money can be spent and what it can be spent on. the limitations of which the money can be spent and what it can be spent on, those kind of things.
Yes, sir. There, the, uh, the five settlement agreements that are coming down the pipe are going to be patterned after the existing settlement that last year. Change, but the rest of the information is basically the same.
But basically it's going to be spent on intervention, prevention and the opioid results itself. Maybe some other things that's a result of the opioids. Not anything really crazy that we got to do that we can't even imagine when they might tell us we got to do with it. Um, but it's going to be totally driven towards the results of the opioid pa- uh, epidemic.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Sounds like a lot of money.
Over eighteen years.
Yeah.
Final item I have is there's an email, third attachment, attachment C. from Penny Harrison, who we're happy to say is back at work and will be attending the retreat Wednesday. So I know you all will be happy to see her.
Good.
Uh, but we did have a death, uh, Mr. Gary Brown, uh, who was a board of the Board of Equalization and Review. And so Penny's advising you of this. She believes he lived in, uh, Commissioner Tucker's district.
My, my neighbor, actually.
I included a roster, the current roster for you. It was an email sent to me by Nathan last week for your information. So just be thinking about that for future meeting. We need to get that appointment. I believe, as she says here, uh, April third will be their first meeting. So it'd be good to get somebody in place. And Clark will be going over before that meeting and swearing all the members in, including hopefully this, this replacement for Mr. Brown.
We'll have time at the next meeting or two to be able to do this.
Yep. You all have three meetings, including the retreat.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to take the moment to say, uh, uh, appreciation to, uh, Mr. Gary Brown, uh, his family for the contribution that he made, uh, not only to, uh, the Board of Equalization and Review, but to many other things. He volunteered and contributed his time to, uh, over many, many years for the betterment of Surrey County. And, uh, I just want to take a moment to, to say we, we thank his family and we honor his memory. And we appreciate his contributions to Surrey County. He was a fine gentleman, friend of mine and a real volunteer for many, many causes. And I just want to take a moment to, uh, to honor him, uh, uh, and his passing. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tucker. Okay, gentlemen.
I have a question on this, on this, this board. This, 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 are you saying that, uh, being, uh, Mr. Brown lived in Pinnacle in, in Commissioner Tucker's district? That is, this is, uh, will, will depend upon Commissioner Tucker to recommend someone for worse? Is that?
I, I didn't.
I, that's just my question.
Well, I don't, I don't assume that responsibility, but I mean, he is in my district, but I mean, I, it looks like we all got one pick a piece and.
There are three in the East District, including Brown's appointment. You have, um, Mr. Bennett and Ms. Stanley.
I didn't appoint Mr. Brown. He was on there long, you know, many years ago, but he did happen to live in my district.
Out of seven, you have three in the East Districts. You may want to consider. Sometimes on a board like this, you need, um, people with certain qualifications because they're he- hearing appeals, a tax penalty.
Who is the, uh? Yeah, I guess she is in the district. Yeah. I have no objection to that whatsoever. Just to just say.
I'm just questioning, I mean, is that where it needs to come from? Is my question, I mean, being to live in Pinnacle, do we need to? Do we, do we need to have someone in your district is my, my question.
It looks like to me that, um, no, there's one from my district. It looks like to me the northwest, the northwest section of the county, uh, from Dobson up towards Low Gap, Beulah, Pine Ridge, that section's a little light, lightly represented to. I don't know if there's anyone up that way that would be interested in serving.
And I will agree with that. I think it looks like East District's well represented and, uh, but he just did happen to be. But he's been on there many, many years. I didn't appoint.
In your last packet, the informational items, there was an application of someone. I can't recall who, who filled out an application for a volunteer appointment. Um, I can send that back out to you. Um, I'm not sure if they'd be qualified for this particular board, but there was an interest already.
Well, I like what was said about the, uh, central district. With, it's like we don't have anybody from the central district. Mr. Marion, I like the that, that person you might very well be met that you.
Mm-hmm. That, that district will be changing soon.
It'll still be a central district.
Yeah. It'll be changing though.
Okay.
We have a request for closed session for legal and personnel. And then there's also a handout, uh, for general county business from the park board. If you all want to discuss it.
Okay, um, the, uh, before we go to general county business, um, I'll let the board weigh in on the, uh, communication from, uh, the Piedmont Area Regional Transportation Board of Trustees. Uh, if there is anyone that wants to weigh in on that, uh, feel free to do so at this time.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our attorney to pretty much give his brief rendition of what this resolution means to, to him?
Absolutely, Ed.
Uh, happy to do so. Um, if you recall, probably five months ago, I wrote Tom Terrill, the attorney for part.
And be sure to get on the mic, Ed.
Letting him know that, uh, this board wanted uh, to be divorced from part. And we also didn't want to have any financial connections with them as far as the, uh, rent a car tax. And that board has discretion to either allow us in or out. And they contend that they have, uh, significant financial ties, uh, based on the improved parking lots that they constructed in Surrey County. Uh, based on that, they don't want to eliminate the rent a car tax, but they did a resolution reduce it from five to two percent. And that's not good enough for what this board, uh, wanted. And my suggestion to this board would be to work through, uh, elected officials at the state level to express dissatisfaction with part's action. Attempt to eliminate remaining two percent.
I'll say amen to the, what the county manager had to say.
Well, you know, when, I think it was Scott Ryan. Was it Scott Ryan here? Was that his name? Scott Ryan was here, uh, I think, uh, we asked him if it was going to be a nice divorce or a messy one. And so it looks like it's going to be a messy one. So, uh, if that's their wish, then we'll just have a messy divorce. So, uh,
I'll, I'll just say that I.
We'll all have at it.
I, uh, I agree. Uh, we didn't ask for a tax reduction. For whatever reason, not just the taxes, but that being one part of it, we asked for a divorce uh, and a disassociation. And I'm still, uh, interested in sticking with our guns and disaffiliating with part.
Anyone else?
I'm with you.
All right, we'll go to it. Um, anything else? Uh, okay, uh, general county business. I'll start with you, Commissioner Marion. If you've got anything tonight.
I just got one, one thing I'd like to say. Last week, we, uh, had the state of the county address at, uh, White Sulfur Springs, nice establishment. Uh, just want to commend our county manager for opening a lot of businesses eyes. Uh, there were several, I'd say thirty, thirty, forty businesses sitting in there and, uh, chambers and the college, uh, represented. And, uh, I just think Mr. Knopf done an outstanding job, uh, giving us all the details and, and, and talking about the financial situation of Surrey County. God, well done. Thank you.
Mr. Goins?
I, just real brief, um, I would like to say that we live, we're blessed to live what we do. Uh, we're blessed that people want to come here. And as Travis Frye, our, our tourism is over our tourism, uh, you know, people come here for a variety of reasons. And it's neat to sit down and talk, you know, you go to the restaurant and ask people where they're from. Uh, and it's amazing to me that people travel from Raleigh to Mount Airy or to Dobson or to Elkin and, and the things that we have to offer in this county. You know, from hiking trails to river accesses to fine restaurants, um, Airbnbs. Uh, I mean, there, there's just a lot of, a lot of things that draw people here and, uh, and I'm glad to be a part of that.
Mr. Tucker?
Uh, just appreciate everybody's participation in a wide array of county business. From cats to rescue squads to, uh, everything in between. But you know, that's what makes us the best county that we can be. And I appreciate everybody's interest, everybody's input. And we'll, we'll run it all through the sausage grinder and we'll, uh, deliberate and we'll do the very best we can. Thank you for your participation.
Mr. Johnson?
I, I usually state how thankful I am for the citizens of Surrey County, all of them, especially the property owners that are, that pay their taxes. I, it's just unbelievable. Since I've been on board, how, how good that the, the county property owners are in our sales tax. I, I'm glad that a, a lot of folks of Surrey County and others that travel, our tourists that come through and spend some money in Surrey County, our tax rev- our sales tax revenue just, just, it's wonderful. I'm thankful for volunteers, what we got left, those willing. I'm thankful for concerned citizens that come up and, and tell us, uh, what's on their mind and, uh, and that, that things that would help us. And, and, and we, and we take it to heart. We take it hard. And how else are we supposed to know these things? You know, if we don't, if we don't get to hear it. And, uh, and, uh, I'm just, I do have, uh, one question possibly. Uh, if you can help refresh my memory, I think we're moving to Elkin for a meeting coming up. Is when, wh- when was that? It'll be in April? Okay.
First meeting in April.
Well, my, the reason I'm asking, cause, uh, Daniel, I think we're, we're going to have our Special Olympics folks to come in. When? Is that first meet, is that our next meeting in March? I think, I just didn't want to, yeah, I just didn't want us to disconnect. I was hoping they would be on a different night, different day. Cause it would be pretty hard for our Special Olympic folks to be, uh, uh, maneuvered well at, at Elkin, uh, at where the meeting would be. Uh, well, I just wonder what Bradley had shared with me about, about our Special Olympics folks coming in. I just want to make sure that we don't miss, I mean.
And that's a good point. We, we don't need to.
Make sure of that. And I'm, uh, I'm thankful for all of our good folks, especially those in law enforcement and and, and in uniform that, uh, protect us and, and keep us safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, only thing I have is, uh, lady come tonight to speak about, uh, a vicious dog in her neighborhood. Um, vicious dogs concern me in Surrey County, uh, or anywhere for that matter. Um, I, uh, read all kinds of stories in the news, um, about, um, children particularly, and it's heartbreaking, um, that have been terribly disfigured and injured by vicious dogs. Uh, read a story recently about, uh, uh, a lady who was killed by a vicious dog. It actually killed her. Um, a lot of times it's, uh, pit bulls, um, and, uh, rottweilers. Um, I've had a lot of conversations over the years about this topic. Uh, some people, um, uh, uh, really disagree with my views on this issue, uh, but I just don't like vicious dogs. I had a conversation with, um, uh, Abraham Dobie this week at, um, the Sheriff's Department about this. Um, I, um, I know how disruptive, uh, someone's life can be uh, when, if they have a vicious dog that is not kept, uh, properly and restrained properly, uh, in their neighborhood or next door. Uh, this particular lady who was here tonight had, uh, very small grandchildren visiting her. Uh, and that tri- and they were from out of state. She, uh, you know, doesn't get to see them very often, her and her husband. And that, um, uh, this, this it was, uh, for all practical purposes, completely disrupted by a vicious dog in, uh, that neighborhood. Um, I don't know what the board's feelings are on this. Um, um, but I think the county, uh, uh, I would certainly be in support of this board asking, uh, the county manager, uh, as well as the sheriff's department, um, to look, um, at what opportunities may be available to us to strengthen, uh, our, uh, vicious dog ordinance. Um, uh, I know there's a fine and then, uh, it continues up, uh, to some level. But, uh, I don't know if it's enough to deter, uh, to be used as a deterrent for people. Um, uh, sometimes it takes a pretty significant financial penalty for people to be deterred, um, to do something with a vicious dog. But, uh, I don't like vicious dogs and, uh, I don't care who knows it. And, uh, so, um, I would be amenable to this board, um, seeking some, uh, additional remedies in that regard. Anyone else? Uh, would, would, would you guys be supportive of getting the county manager and maybe the sheriff's department to look into, uh, our ordinance that, uh, relates to vicious dogs and see what we, uh? Okay.
I would, but I, after having served several years on the health board, which it used to be governed by the health board, which is now by the sheriff's department. I, I would imagine there's a lot of state law that dictates rules about dangerous dogs and what determines they're a dangerous dog. You know, we did, in this particular case, I think we did issue a couple of fines. Can they be enhanced?
Yeah, but.
Make it more stringent? I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's the.
What the limitation?
And I don't remember the exact specifics of how many times this person's been cited. And, uh, I know the fine was, you know, it's not significant.
Small, like.
You know, I don't know that it gets a lot of people's attention, but, uh.
Sure.
I, I think it's, uh.
We'll support you in looking into it, of course.
Okay, all right. Chris, if we could do that. Okay. All right, it's all I have. So, uh, looking, uh, for a motion to go into closed session, gentlemen.
Motion to go into close, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Commissioner Goins, to have a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Tucker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's our closed session.
All right.
If we make contributions. We'll see, we'll see if we can go ahead and count on less.
Sound good?
Yes, we'll get more detail. Big time, big time.
Big button, bottom right. No, up top. The big button, the bottom right. No, big button on the bottom right.
Other, but besides that, we got about three county high schools in front of you.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Tucker, Second Commissioner Marion. Any discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have.